Recording in progress.
State law requires this body to announce at this time that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is available at the back of the room or is accessible to the public. Wees?
Here.
Tiller?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Gibbons?
Here.
Harrington?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
I'll rise for a moment of silence filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. My Pledge of Allegiance is as follows: United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one, consent agenda. Approve this agenda and pay the claims as submitted. Mr. Herrick? Johnson? Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Tiller?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Item two, approve the minutes of the April 18th, 2023 regular council meeting.
I wanted just to make a note. Oh.
Go ahead.
Um, the minutes where it said that the clerk Dane had distributed the letter from Mr. Lammers, I just want to make sure clear for the note, for the record, that it was digital. We did not receive a hard copy and it was just prior to the meeting.
Larry?
Yeah, I had a couple of corrections. Shows here that for Jeremy Fueschner from the Fire Department and the YMCA that I was here, but I wasn't.
Thank you. Okay. Motion as amended?
I want to make a motion.
Tiller? And Cory, Wees? Wolf?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Epstein.
Herring?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Tiller?
Yes.
Item three, public form, non-agenda items. Please state your name, two minutes.
Anybody? Just me? It just, it baffles me how much people don't want to participate in our system of government, which is a republic. I brought copies for everybody. Oh, one, two, three, four, three, four. The mayor, Ben's already got one, Mr. Harrington can pass one down to Mr. Smith. I guess Mr. Fuhr's absent. I've got a couple extras here. We can get them over to the clerk and the chief in a minute. But these are the county's oath of office, which are to the Constitution of the state of Nebraska and the United States. Y'all take the same oaths to the Constitution, not to a statute, not to a municipality, not to a king, not to Doug Young or the mayor, to the Constitution. And there's a law. Now, Mike Henry would lie to you and tell you this law doesn't exist, but I called a federal judge, Justice Saladino for the District of Nebraska. This law is on the books. It's valid, it's usable. Title 18, United States Code, Section 2381. Anyone that dishonors the Constitution in open court or with two witnesses can be hung at high noon at the nearest busy intersection. And this is the Clearfield Trust v. United States, 318, 1943. This is the Supreme Court of the city. And it just baffles me that no one cares about the Constitution. Now, currently, the city, as a municipality, has not violated my constitutional rights. There's an argument that goes something like this. You have rights, you may or may not know if they're violated. If they've been violated, you may or may not have the testicular fortitude to go through a finished program, and you might not have the financial wherewithal. The county has violated my rights. The county charged me with a felony, which means the county did all the discovery for me and charged the taxpayer. That works very well for me in civil court. I don't know how the city wants to spend its money, but I'm just giving you fair warning. If you want to go to federal court and spend money, I drive, or rather, travel at the common law, you pull me over, impound my car, I bond it out, we go to court, we go all the way up to federal court, and I already sent you 167 pages of memorandum of how I'm going to win. The doctrine of stare decisis. It's your money, your taxpayers' money, and you spend it how you want to. Not intended as a threat, quoting John Gerard, Justice of Nebraska, 421 CB 3085. This communication is a privilege of public service.
Oh, yeah. Anybody else for a public form? I will close public form. Item four, consider request to use sidewalk in front of Brookstone Health, Home Health, 507 West Avenue for sidewalk sale. Good evening.
I'm Sonya Taylor, and I work for Brookstone Home Health and Hospice. We are a company under the Better Senior Living, and every year they have a foundation, they raise money for that. And so we would just like to use the sidewalk in front of our office to have a bake sale and possibly have the inside be like a garage sale area, just to raise funds for the foundation.
What's the date on that?
Yeah, what's the date?
So we were thinking of doing it on the 17th of June. I think that's a Saturday. It would be the weekend of Swedish.
Swedish.
Okay. She doesn't need to request them. That weekend is there now?
Yeah, it's already.
All right, better proof. Sorry, man.
Oh, okay.
Have a ball.
Will cars be lined up there still? Is that, I forgot how the cars are lined up. Are they going to be ready to arrive?
I don't think the car show is, is car show that weekend?
Yeah. It'll be on Saturday.
I can't remember which lot. Yeah, I don't remember. You know, they changed them a little bit, and I don't, uh...
Between fourth and seventh on West Avenue will be where all, the chamber has all the stuff set up. You should be around.
Thank you. Item five, consider renewal of the city's light health insurance program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jason Powers with Legacy Brokers. I've been the advisor for the city of Holdridge since 2008? So some familiar faces and some new faces, hello. Nice to meet you. Usually, I was telling Damon what, usually I drive up here in October. So it's dark when I get here, it's dark when I leave. When we switched in January to the Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan for the LEAGUE, which is the LIGHT, that stands for LEAGUE Insurance Government Health Plan through Blue Cross, all of the LEAGUE plans reset on July 1st. So we're now on a July 1 renewal. What you've got are four, four different packets in front of you. One is just a printed email from Blue Cross Blue Shield that kind of explains that they are going through a renewal increase across the entire LEAGUE plan of 4.04%. The, there's no change to the benefit structure, so the same plan of benefits we offer today. We can offer effective July 1st. The only real action required is to, is to fill out our subgroup application and then open enrollment process with employees, let them make changes if we choose to proceed with Blue Cross, which I assume we didn't buy into this for six months to make a change. The one thing that they did change here on page two is the rate table assignment. So if you recall, we're part of now, part of like a consortium, if you will, or association of other plans. And what they've, what they've done is they've given us a rate table assignment of Table I, which is now Table 9. So they just changed it from alphanumeric to numeric. The whole block went up 4%. So each table assignment went up 4.04%. It's not to say after they get a full year's of claims, we don't see a readjustment next July in a different table. The higher the table in numerical value, so lower on that table, the higher the rates are. So we're not quite middle, but maybe a little higher than middle of the road with regard to rates across the state. Questions about that before I move on to the second document? So the second one's the colorful one with the smaller print. That's my analysis that should look familiar for those who have seen this in the past. Just showing the side-by-side comparison of our rates effective January 1st and what our new rates are effective July 1st. The total increase across the board is, is projected on an annual basis. Realistically, this, this fiscal year, you won't really feel that, the full impact of that increase until, until we actually go through January through June of next year. But again, same, same benefit design using, we've got some folks that choose a copay plan with a $1,000 deductible, and we have others that choose the HSA plan with that $3,500 deductible, and then the city funds the Health Savings Account on behalf of employees. So that's, that's the gist of the renewal analysis. What we don't get inside that LEAGUE plan is I don't get any claims data, so I can't tell you how we're running compared to where we were last year claims-wise. I think we talked about that in October. The savings that we saw with this was substantial enough that it's okay for us to move forward and not know kind of how we're performing. There's really no feedback from Blue Cross as to whether that we might see a bigger increase next year with utilization. We'll just kind of have to play that by ear next spring. Questions on that sheet? The next one is the actual Blue Cross tables. You know, what we show really is the first option, PBO Option 1, is that the copay plan that we offer, and we use Network Blue. So if you look at any of the other tables, we're not using those other plans or those other networks. And then the HSA is on the second page. We use HSA Option 3. If you want to check my numbers versus the actual Blue Cross rates, I wanted to make sure you had that included as well. Questions on that? All right. And we're not recommending making any changes. We haven't made changes to the plan designs for 14, 15 years. Kept it pretty, pretty well the same. Employees, I think, see the benefit of it, that there's good value in that plan design. The last one is the Mutual of Omaha benefits with the LEAGUE plan. Not only, not only did the LEAGUE partner with Blue Cross, but they partnered with Mutual of Omaha. We currently offer on that first page, it's required for us to offer the life insurance at $20,000 per employee with accidental death and dismemberment. And then we have to offer the voluntary life. The city pays for the base life, and then the employees have the option to purchase additional voluntary life or supplemental life up to five times their annual salary. So we currently offer those two. We looked at whether or not there was an option to add some of the other products. Long-term disability is listed there. There's two different plan options. The trick with long-term disability is we have to have a minimum of 10 enrolled. So it's one of those, if we could offer these lines, if we don't hit enrollment, then we just wouldn't, wouldn't be successful in offering the benefit package.
And we did not offer them last year because it was kind of an experiment. I think we're going to open them all up this year to see what kind of response we get from our employees, but if we don't get the minimums, then they won't get to participate.
And then the second page is short-term disability, same thing, minimum of 10 enrolled there in order for us to, to hit participation. But dental has a minimum of three, and then there's two different plan options there. And then the third page has vision, which is one that we talked about, maybe offering up. We just have a minimum of three enrolled for the vision. I think with a population of 60-some-odd people, we should be able to wrangle up three people that need glasses, so. And for the rate, it's, it's affordable. And then voluntary, critical illness, and voluntary accident. Critical illness is a, I think when people look at the rate for that benefit, it's a, as long as we can get three people enrolled. And then the accident, same thing, just a minimum of three enrolled. So, but they're, they're good benefits for people that, you know, want to protect risk or want to protect themselves from the risks that they have for ended up in the emergency room or having situations.
On these, that is, that is paid by the employee?
Right. Yeah, they're just payroll deductions. With the exception of voluntary life, everything, and well, with disability, you can do pre-tax payroll deductions, but everything else, pre-tax payroll deductions, you can choose disability to do one way or the other. If you pre-tax the premium, you can't pre-tax the benefit, so. But, yeah, all, all employee paid there. So, I mean, normally, we have a good eight, nine months of data to look through, and I usually have some more time to talk, but that's pretty straightforward, this, this go-around. I do anticipate, and I said it last year, I'll say it again, you know, historically, we have about $1 million of claims, and our premiums are not even $1 million. We're at $820,000 in premiums. So I do expect that if we do experience the same kind of claims utilization we've had in the past, that we'll, we'll have some things to talk about next spring when that renewal comes back around. Should have the protection of the, of the rest of the groups inside the LEAGUE, and those are things we'll have to, considerations we'll have to weigh as we, as we look at those options next year. But, but this year, I think it's pretty straightforward renewal for you. And our recommendation would be to move forward with Blue Cross, and let's see how things go next spring.
The, the insurance is offered at every department in the city? And will you meet again with employees once we, well, if we okay it?
No, then they'll, they'll gather the opportunity to renew, and they'll get another renewal thing, and it's all via email. So they do all their own signing up now, and they'll get another opportunity to log in, select the benefits that they want.
And do we have a percentage that we know a number of the city employees who use this insurance plan?
Based on, on what they do now? We, we get reports from, actually, it's called EAS, but they gather all the data, who is paid and who's not.
We use an online enrollment system called EAS to roll out the benefits. So it's almost like an Amazon shopping cart experience where they can click to add the products that they want and see what their payroll deductions would be.
Yeah, but we have a number, I mean, we know now as a city, the percentage of employees that actually use it as to how many employees? Oh, we don't know a number, though? I mean, there's not like a percent?
I don't know a number off the top of my head. I would say probably about 90%.
But, okay.
Probably.
There's only a handful that don't take the insurance.
Usually because they're either spousal or Medicare eligible.
Right, right.
On that colored sheet, I've got the census breakdown of who's enrolled in which plan. So the numbers on the left would correlate to the plan on the left, and then the numbers on the right of that would correlate to the plan on the right. A lot of families that participate, 16 total families, some, some with maybe the spouse doesn't take coverage, or there's not a spouse, and then others that have spousal coverage that don't have kids covered, or, so, pretty good participation, and has been for some time.
That's a good plan.
It's a good benefit.
Yeah, it's a good benefit.
Yeah, you hire them?
It's a good benefit.
Any more questions, comments? Is that the motion to renew? Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Tiller?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Kind of thank you all go through the application. Right?
All right. Thank you, Chase. Send to Lincoln.
Thanks, guys.
Receive the, item six, receive the Citizens Advisory Review Committee semi-annual report for the utilization of LB 840, Local Option Municipal Sales Tax Fund from July 1st through July, or December 31st, 2022. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Greg Erickson. I'm representing the Citizens Advisory Review Committee. The committee met on April 5th. We welcomed two new members and elected Zach Gray as the new chairman. We reviewed the semi-annual report and the financial statements ending 12/31/22. We noted the 11% increase in sales tax receipts for the second half of 2022, the higher-than-projected net income for the year, and continuing efforts of PCDC to increase the number of housing options, and other completed and ongoing projects. And we approved the report with no discrepancies.
Any questions?
No, other than to say I attended that meeting, it was really quite a bit of information that they did receive. They asked a lot of questions. Good.
Okay. I have none. I will just go right to, straight to number seven, approve the Citizens Advisory Review Committee's findings for PCDC's LB 840 Fund Financial Statement for the calendar year 2022. I'll make the motion to approve. And Nick? Smith?
Yes.
Wees?
Yes.
Tiller?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Herrick?
Yes.
Doc? Yes.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Item eight, receive Phelps County 2022 to 2027 Housing Study with Strategies for Affordable Housing. Oh, yeah. Ron?
I believe you have the, the housing study. I didn't put out the hard copy for, for you. I'm sure that you've all had a chance to take a look, at least at the summary. Then I prepared this cover memo for you that pulls out some of the strategies and goals established by the housing study. That's a little easier read, but I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you have. I would preface it by saying that today we have three new houses on foundations out in Crew Subdivision, and over the course of the next two days, they'll finish setting three more. And then the same company that's putting those houses in out there has made a commitment to build seven more. And as soon as we see some housing sales occur out there, what they intend to do is build two more for, to replace two that they, they sell. So we'll have a stream of houses being constructed and then set it, set on foundations out there over the remainder of this year. We've got a back and forth occurring with legal counsel on the remaining six lots, which will go to another housing developer that intends to build duplex-style townhouses that will come in at a lower price point than the ones that are going in right now. And that will then also intend to start with two at a time, and they believe that by the end of this year, they'll have all six completed, or at least started. And that will complete Crew Subdivision. We'll be adding 19 units out there. That only addresses a portion of the demand in the market according to the, the housing study. We have two different models that were included in the housing study. One is sort of a no-growth model, or the moderate, medium target demand, and in that model, we need 57 new owner-occupied housing units in the community, and 71 renter-occupied. When we take into consideration the anticipated growth that we see occurring at Almond, BD, and Ambehta, as well as other employers in the community, that comes up with the G I T target demand, Growth Initiative target demand, and that one suggests that we need 83 owner-occupied houses and 110 renter-occupied units. So we, we think that we need to shoot someplace in the middle of those two and then see how we respond to that market initiative. With the 19 homes in Crew Subdivision and the 26 that are planned for what's been formally called the Taggy property, we're going to, we're going to make a good effort to address that owner-occupied demand, but we're not going to exceed it. That's why we're continuing to work on other potential properties that, we, we're aware of other property, and, and we're having discussions with other property developers right now for continuing this housing push after Crew and Taggy are fully occupied. So we need to start now to ensure that we're in a good position to do that when those are completed. I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Heritage will have, the six is what are going to be?
Currently, yes.
Currently, and then another seven, two at a time?
Yes, they committed, we have a signed contract to build seven more with Heritage.
Okay.
Two at a time. Once they sell two, they'll start two more.
Okay, all right. So you get two of the current six sold, they'll start on another two?
Correct. And while we were out there watching them set houses on foundations today, Dale came out. One, we had a local Realtor that was onsite too, and then she was taking calls from people that were interested in the property, so.
Good.
Now that they actually see houses going in out there, I think stimulates more interest.
You're, you think the price point is okay?
We're a little concerned. Construction costs have escalated, and, and that's out of everyone's total control. We've encouraged the, both the Heritage people and the other companies that we're talking to to maintain as good a control on pricing as it can and as much flexibility. What we're doing is making the lots available at no cost so that... What we're doing is making the lots available at no cost so that we can keep the cost of the housing down to the greatest extent possible. But there is really nothing in Holdridge or in Carney or other surrounding communities that are in that price point right now. So we're hoping that we can attract some commuters.
Okay. Commuters. And long-term, without, you know, it's all speculation, any apartment, do you think?
That's the next phase. Once we get the subdivision at that Taggy property underway, that's one of the things that we've discussed with a developer on the additional property that we're, it's under control by a local company, and they've asked us to help them find developers that can do something out there, and that includes apartments.
Okay.
And by the way, when I say commuters, we've got 2,200 people that commute into Holdridge or Phelps County every day from someplace outside of Phelps County. Many of those, 300 to 400, are coming out of Carney. A couple hundred are coming out of Carney County. And then the rest are coming from small towns, some out of Lexington, 150 or so out of Lexington, but the rest out of smaller towns in our surrounding area. We, through the housing study and other research that we've done, we've determined that about 30% or so of that 2,200 would actually like to live here, but they don't have housing choices that would allow them to move here. So that's partly why housing is such an important economic development factor for us right now.
Ron, do you have any developers, contractors, builders, and property to put any other units like they have at Arlington? I get people all the time, we're needing that kind of setting.
You know, we, all of those duplexes out in Crew Subdivision right now are income-based.
Right.
And we need more of that kind of development in the community, as well as the market rate units. But that's a really hard nut to crack. Cliff Messner and his firm did the low-income housing tax credit units out there that are income-based. He's one of the few in the state that work in rural communities in Nebraska. There are several developers in Omaha and Lincoln that do, but only a handful that work in small communities like ours. And he's stretched pretty thin, but we're continuing to have conversations with him about doing more projects here.
Anything else? Great information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, approve an agreement for professional services with Front Water Engineering LLC for services related to the development of a new public water supply well set forth in the agreement.
Mayor, can we have a vote on the last item? It's required by statute.
Go on. Yes, I'm sorry. To?
Set that?
To receive the housing study.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah. So, get a motion to receive the study. Corey?
Second.
Stacy?
Tiller?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Given?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all right.
I'm new here. All right. Again, number nine, approve an agreement for professional services with Front Water Engineering LLC for services related to the development of a new public water supply well set forth in the agreement.
This is for the design and the bidding of the new well that we want to place up on 18th Street. You ready to put the test well in?
Where's it going to be on 18th?
Near the big tree, is there on 18th and Burlington?
Oh, okay.
Behind that. The test well already sits there.
And this would be to put the V well, yeah?
Put the well in, yes.
On the north, east?
East corner, yeah. Or that, yep.
Yep.
One of the things I was reading that information, what is an MDEE fee? It did state on there?
That's a state fee that when it's designed, we have to submit the plans to the state, and then they charge us the fee accordingly.
And it said it was unknown at the time?
Right, because you don't know what your cost, yeah, you don't know what the bid is going to be. So if it comes in an X amount of dollars, then it's a percentage of that.
Any other questions?
Was that the only bid?
This is just the engineering. This isn't for the well placement.
Okay.
This is for the design and then the go-out-for bids and everything.
I'll make that motion. Nick, Moose?
Second.
Dale, second. Lee?
Yes.
Tiller?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Given?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item 10, consider the second reading of Ordinance 2463, amending Chapter 6, Article 3, Section 6-302 of the Holdridge Municipal Code related to weed removal.
Any questions? Second reading, Ordinance 2463, an ordinance to amend Chapter 6, Article 3, Section 6-302 of the Holdridge Municipal Code related to police regulations, weed removal. Repealing all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the severability of all parts hereof, and designating the time described on this ordinance shall be in effect, be ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Holdridge, Nebraska. I'll make the motion. Ben? Moose? Lola, seconds? Smith?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Tiller?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Given?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Open discussion.
We'll start with you. Testing tomorrow for officer candidates.
Testing is that?
Yeah, we do written testing and physical testing. So we'll do that tomorrow and see what we get.
I have a question for the chief real quick. On, are we, is Communications Department dispatching, are we understaffed? Are we needing any other people?
We're fully staffed, but we're still training. So we've got two that are still training.
Okay, I was just wondering on the overtime, there was, there seemed to be quite a bit of overtime, so I was just wondering if it was.
And then the way that they're scheduled, they actually get one, one and a half hour a week anyway, because they have to communicate with one another when they're moving, or, you know.
There's an overlap of shifts.
Yeah, overlap. So they have to say, hey, this is what's going on today, so we give them about an hour and a half a week, so. But yes, that's, they're still working on training, so.
Anything else, Jason? Thank you. Pass. Pass. Chris?
The Phelps County Visitors Committee will be coming, I think, to the first meeting in June to talk about, to establish a creative district. This will allow us to open up some grants and some other funds to different things in the community. So they're going to come present that. I think that's it?
Thank you. No? Nothing? Ben?
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing but that.
Nothing?
Okay.
No?
Lola?
Just that I have asked again regarding getting together for a retreat, a council retreat, certain topics we'd like to revisit.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Matty?
Nothing for me?
Yeah?
Nothing, sir.
Right.
Nothing here.
The only thing I've got, there was a appointed Amelia Seidrum?
Stridum.
Stridum. I knew I was going to miss that, and I apologize. To the Tree Board to fulfill a opening grid when Dentitis stepped away, and so she is now a new member of the Tree Board. Other than that, it's a meeting.
Does anybody know what the eagle with the open wings on the top of the flagpole means? Does anybody know what it means when the eagle's wings are closed? Does anybody know why the flag has gold trim?
Her, yes, you could. Her name is Beth.